Order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a statement in Compliance to Open Public Meetings Act.
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting of the council was provided by transmitting a copy of the meeting notice to the Madison Eagle and the Morris County Daily Record, posting a copy on the bulletin board at the main entrance of Borough Hall, and filing a copy in the office of the clerk, all on January 15, 2013. Copies of said notice were made available to members of the general public.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Conley.
Here.
Mrs. Tsukamoto.
Here.
Mr. Cattellinello.
Here.
Mr. Landrigan.
Here.
Mrs. Vitale.
Here.
Ms. Bailey.
Here.
Mr. Walkways.
Here.
All right, agenda review. We will have police, fire, public works, and engineering as far as budget review. And we will also add a presentation on where we see the open space tax going. So we have, because there's been a lot of questions, and we also need to tie that up in this whole process. So that will be at the end. And for the people in the public, as we did last year, as long as time permits, we'll allow at the end of each section, questions or comments on the particular presentation. Okay, so you don't have to hold them to the end. And of course, number seven is invitation for public comment on anything. All right. Let's go to police. And we have Department 240. Chief. And just for the audience, there are some copies, right? And they are numbered, we'll be going through. And the department number, you will see near the top, there's department, and you'll see in the, all those digits, a 240, so you know what, you can follow it along at home. All right, chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Mr. Cody, Mr. Burnett. I want to thank you for this opportunity to present my 2013 Madison Police Department budget. As you're well aware, we've been in very harsh economic times over the past several years. In preparing this budget, this fact was taken into account. I believe this budget to be lean, but still afford our agency the opportunity to preserve the exceptional services that our community expects from our department. The Madison Police Department's 2013 staffing levels will reflect the retirement of one chief and one lieutenant. We have hired one officer in the latter part of 2012 and have budgeted for one more to be hired in the early part of 2013. This would make our current staff at 27 sworn officers, seven civilian positions, which include four dispatchers, two secretaries, one CSO, and two per diem positions. This budget also represents the promotions of two sergeants, two lieutenants, and one chief, which took place in the later part of January. We have recently hired one per diem records clerk, which will increase the efficiency and productivity of the division and will provide a better level of service to our residents within the framework of our existing budget. One of my first goals as chief is to begin the police accreditation process. Police accreditation is a progressive means to evaluate and improve the overall performance of our agency. This process will overhaul our current policies and procedures, rules and regulations. It implements current, modern police practices and incorporates a set of 100 standards which have been adopted by the New Jersey Association of Chiefs of Police. Once implemented, these new procedures will be verified through outside agency inspection. What is not inspected is not respected. This process will once again increase the efficiency and effectiveness of our agency while reducing exposure to liability, litigation, and will promote citizen confidence in our department. This process will be funded by the Morris County Joint Insurance Fund, and if adopted by the governing body, it would possibly reduce our premium as much as 8 percent. I would also seek to increase training for my officers utilizing technology via online services for first responders. Mandatory training will be accomplished online if available, thereby reducing training costs and staffing shortages due to training. Officers will have the ability to pursue training online when there are slow times during their shift. Once again, this will decrease overtime as well as meet mandatory training requirements. A well-trained officer is more efficient, productive, professional, and will once again reduce exposure to liability through a broader knowledge base. In 2013, I have budgeted for one patrol vehicle and plan on asking for one additional vehicle through capital improvements. Our fleet is ever aging because of the increase in the replacement schedule. This has been extended over several years. As you know, the older a vehicle gets, the more likely the cost to repair that vehicle will increase. Police vehicles are much different than your personal vehicles at home. They idle for long periods of time, make abrupt starts, stops, which cause considerable wear and tear to the mechanics of the vehicle. Police vehicles may become involved in high-speed pursuits and must be suitable for the safety of our officers and the public that share our roadways. My current fleet consists of seven patrol vehicles, two detective vehicles, one traffic vehicle, two administrative vehicles, two road job vehicles, one community service officer vehicle, one school resource officer vehicle, one emergency services unit vehicle, two motorcycles, and one undercover vehicle. This consists of 20 vehicles for my division. In the recent months, we have donated one vehicle to the Union Beach Police Department in the wake of Hurricane Sandy and had one patrol vehicle totaled in a motor vehicle crash. These two vehicles both had excess of 80,000 miles. We also took two undercover vehicles out of service due to their condition and the cost of repair. In 2013, I plan on working closely with the Board of Education, our school resource officer, as well as the Morris County Prosecutor's Office on school security. This analysis of each school has already, is already in progress for the protection of our children and our school staff. Our resource officer will remain in the school system and is a vital link between our educational institutions and our department. I would also improve the relationship with Drew University and their Public Safety Department. This new forested relationship will explore ways to decrease the need for police responses in certain situations. We have already discussed and reviewed current policies, which will no longer need initial police response without jeopardizing safety. In 2012, the Madison Police Department logged 27,072 calls for service. I plan on implementing an overlap in our patrol schedule, which should reduce the amount of overtime that is generated for calls that come in at the end of an officer's shift. With the new overlap officer, they will take any incoming calls that come in at the end of a shift, thus reducing overtime for that officer. I will also pursue other ways to reduce overtime due to staffing issues and supervisory shortages. Society places an enormous amount of responsibility on police officers. They have the ability to take away some of civil liberties and use deadly force in certain circumstances. Therefore, our shifts will never be void of a supervisor, even though we will explore ways to reduce this cost. I do feel we have challenging times ahead, but I look forward to working with my command staff and to come up with innovative ways to reduce costs without sacrificing our level of service to our community. We must keep trying new approaches to capitalize on the resources we are allocated. Not every idea will work, but we must keep thinking outside the box and we must keep our minds open.
Thank you. Well-presented questions, comments from liaisons?
Just one, chief. With the aging vehicles, would you consider or look into leasing as a possibility?
Yes, absolutely.
Ben and then Bobman.
I just, I have a general question.
We'll wait for the, is this an introduction to our next budget?
Louis, Chief Louis. I'm trying to ask the question.
It's a setup.
Just a general question. When you were kind enough to give me a tour of the building, particularly impressive part was the screens up for the dispatchers. And it was explained to me how this technology really helps out a great deal in figuring out where cars are, and also there's some associated cost savings. I was just wondering if there's anything on the horizon that is comparable in terms of applying technology to police work that would have a significant impact?
We are always exploring new technologies that'll make us more efficient. That's part of the process where we have to get officers in the field and explore these possibilities.
But there's nothing, there's nothing in particular at the moment?
Nothing in particular.
Okay, thank you.
Bob and then Carmella?
I just saw one number here, chief, that jumped out, was the food under emergency management services. Is that?
Was that the increase to $10,000? With that is that there are such emergency appropriations? That basically came, you know, came to light during Hurricane Sandy?
Right.
Those, that the $10,000 will establish blanket orders through area supermarkets?
Yeah.
You know, for emergency appropriations, for shelters, for first responders?
Absolutely. Good. All right.
Carmella?
Chief, I was listening to you talk about the overlap of schedules, which is, it's a very, very interesting concept. Can you explain that a little bit more, so a better understanding?
Our officers currently work seven to seven. I would like to bring at least one officer in working six to six, because at the end of a shift, if an officer gets a call, that officer is going to have to go to the call, take care of whatever business they have, come back and potentially write a report, which a lot of times creates overtime. So at the end of a shift, we're going to have an officer in an hour early. That officer will take those late calls, therefore not creating any overtime.
Oh, okay. Good concept. Very good.
Jeanne and then Rob.
Chief, thank you very much for keeping your budget flat this year. And I have a few questions. One regarding the overtime. As we can tell from this, the number here, last year for overtime, we incurred $295,000, which is a lot of money. And since I was a liaison for the past three years, I know that much of that overtime is for supervision, particularly patrol supervision. And one of the things that we discussed in probably the past year and a half is potentially if we bring in another sergeant to your department that can drastically reduce the cost for overtime in terms of police supervision. Is that something that you're still considering, or you believe that there are other ways to reduce the overtime cost?
I definitely would like to explore that possibility. I would like to have more supervision, therefore having a broader supervisory base to draw from. I would like to have a new supervisor act as a floating sergeant who can fill these positions. Currently, right now, I have a tough time filling certain positions when there's a shortage on patrol sergeants.
If I remember correctly, when we were looking at the number, probably this is nine months ago or so, that there's a potential that we can save at least $90,000 of your overtime cost by adding another sergeant, patrol sergeant?
A good portion of that expenditure is sergeant overtime.
Yeah. So how do we get this, are you going to analyze this further and come back with a proposal, or what's your plan regarding that?
Yeah, I'll definitely work closely with my liaison and hopefully come up with a plan and see if it's feasible.
Right. Okay. Next question is, does the professional services here include office cleaning, or office cleaning is all lumped into the other one that you and the fire department share?
Right. Under 215?
Yep. So the, for 240, here's an item called professional services. What is that for? Just curious.
Chief, maybe I can respond. It's for psychology tests, translator services, school crossing guard, new hire physicals, OSHA annual respirator fittings and all?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Correct.
The vehicle that you mentioned, last year we spent $41,000. If I remember correctly, that was an SUV. And this year, under the operating budget, you only put in 38. So I'm assuming that you're getting a regular sedan patrol vehicle, or?
We plan on getting another SUV.
So would the 38 be sufficient, since last year it cost 41?
I was speaking with Officer Longo on that. I believe we might have a shortfall on the patrol vehicle for this year. We may be short $2,000 to $3,000 on that.
Because of that, right?
Because of that.
I don't think the cost is coming down for SUV.
Correct.
Okay, so that might be something we need to adjust?
Yes.
Okay. You mentioned, when you talk about another police vehicle, you mentioned capital, but that's not capital, that's operating, right? I just want to make sure that this is the line item for the, or did I hear you incorrectly?
We have one vehicle in the regular budget, and I'm going to ask for a second vehicle in capital.
Because that car is going to last longer? Is that why that's in capital?
Yes.
Okay.
It should be in excess of five years.
Okay. All right. One more question. It's not specific for 240, but a general question, perhaps Robert already can help me with, regarding telephone. How much do we spend total in telephone services in the borough? Does anyone know?
Robert?
I think the budget's around $60,000.
$60,000? Just wondering, that's a, that's a pretty big number, whether or not that we can search for a more cost-effective way of providing telephone services. I don't know if anyone have looked into that.
We actually did that with Councilman Lynx and our telephone expert Lou DeRosa. We actually interviewed a number of companies, switch carriers twice, and also did an audit of all existing lines. And we found abandoned lines in rec huts and different things. So we went through the, every bill was scrutinized for whether it was an active phone or not. And we, basically, Lou can talk when he's up as part of the fire presentation, but we've gone through that exercise very recently and achieved significant savings. And a lot of it was attributed to Don Lynx, who introduced us to some concepts that he was applying in his business workplace that we brought to the borough.
That's great, because it looks like the cost is going up every year for that particular line item. Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Rob?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just asking this question because I ran into this problem on Monday. I imagine as part of the routine training, your officers have target practice. And ammo is becoming very scarce and very expensive. I don't see it anywhere in here. And I'm wondering, does your budget fully address the increased cost for the rounds we need to buy to, you know, for practice and routine day-to-day?
Yes, we should have ample supply for this year, and this year we'll be purchasing for next year.
Fantastic, okay. And we're reflecting the higher cost in your budget?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. And so we pretty much covered emergency management services and vehicle maintenance and that. And so, Project Pride, Bridget?
Good evening, everybody. Mayor, council, Mr. Cody and Mr. Burnett. My name is Bridget Kelly. I'm the Director of Project Community Pride. I'm a licensed clinical social worker in the state of New Jersey. I completed my Master of Social Work in 1996 from Fordham University, and since then I've worked within the fields of mental health in various settings, in hospital child psychiatric units, outpatient clinics, and in private practice. I came to Project Community Pride in 2005 and became the Director officially on April 1, 2009. Project Community Pride began in 1976 in an effort to address the issue of adolescent delinquency here in Madison. Capen with a grant and the belief that teens were getting into trouble with the law because of problems in their family. Over the years, Project Community Pride has developed into a shared service, serving the communities of Madison, Chatham Borough, and Florham Park. We work with families who are in need of services regardless of their ability to pay. This allows us to service local children and families who would not otherwise be able to access mental health services. The need for these barrier-free services has grown in our community since 2009 because of the difficult economy, which has created greater stress in families. Many local mental health programs have closed their doors and changed the nature of the need right here in Madison. We are seeing children who have more serious mental health needs and fewer resources to address them. Despite just two and a half therapists on staff and stagnant municipal funding, we continue to meet the growing mental health needs of children in our community. Our program, like many other nonprofits, is struggling financially and fighting to survive. We have detected children in Madison who have otherwise fallen through the cracks, children who have, we have become aware of because of our ongoing relationships with families in the community, children who have been subsequently assessed by psychiatrists to be suicidal, hearing voices, and actively psychotic. This type of intervention is proactive in nature and undoubtedly saves lives. Madison is not immune to the type of problems happening in other places, such as cyberbullying, teen suicide, and school violence. Our involvement in our town not only improves the quality of the school system, but makes Madison a safer place to live. We learn about crimes committed against children from families with whom we are working. Our close relationship with the Madison Police Department facilitates any reporting of these crimes and often leads to the arrest of perpetrators. Clearly, our role in this process is not publicized, but is something we believe to be invaluable. Thank you for your attention and your consideration.
Thank you, Bridget.
Do you have any questions?
Yep, questions or comments? Jeanne?
Thank you for what you do. One question, though. Office cleaning. Which, is that under professional services? How do we cover that? The reason that I want to bring office cleaning up is because I know currently that the staff clean the building, you do your own garbage, you clean your own bathroom, and you scrub your own toilet. So I don't think that should be an expectation of having the professionals to do that, cleaning your own bathroom. So I was just wondering, how are we covering cleaning services for Project Pride?
Thank you. Yes, right now there's nothing that's actually in the budget for that. And so we've taken it on ourselves because we want to have a decent place to be for our patients and our families. So I don't know if that's something that could be worked out. That would be wonderful.
Perhaps that is something that we can talk about under building maintenance?
I mean, the fire department, similarly, are professionals. They clean their building. The borough provides a 10-year lease for a dollar a year. We pay the utilities, we pay the phone bill, we pay everything at the facility and provide approximately $100,000 of support and the lost income from that facility. So I believe the borough is a good partner, and it does need additional resources, but I'm hopeful that the other participating communities will recognize for the first time in 10 years the value of the program and increase their contribution, which they haven't done for the last 10 years.
Also, it is a goal this year to be working closely with Project Community Pride, to strengthen it. As Bridget pointed out, as with many nonprofits, it is a very difficult environment. And we don't want to see Project Pride get weakened at all. So it, I think as an overall process, we certainly can look at everything, but it's kind of a unique setup in that we see part of the puzzle right here in that this is the borough part, but there's the Project Community Pride nonprofit. And so it's a hybrid, and it's a valuable hybrid, and we can make it run more efficiently.
Mayor, may I, I want to draw the, see, I consider Project Pride, you know, your facility, your bathroom, that's really a public place. But I don't think the public really go into the fire department and use the bathroom. So I do understand the differences and differences here.
Mayor, I'm liaison to Project Community Pride. And yes, we're working to work with the Board as well as the schools and the borough of Chatham to make sure that Project Community Pride is strong and is in our community. I think, though, we could probably, if cleaning was really a necessity, I think there's some wiggle room here to take it out of the existing budget. If the staff thought, you know, it was that important, that, you know, there's some room here that we could work with. We don't have to increase the budget.
Sounds good. Other questions? Ben?
I'm just curious as to how many, I guess it's hard to characterize. I would say families, but then I'm sure you just see individuals. So for lack of a better term, units, can you see over the course of a year?
For Madison, we saw
Well, you can tell me in the aggregate.
About 150 last year. I just did a rough calculation.
Okay.
In some capacity. We have lots of services that we offer, individual, family therapy groups. So amongst that.
That's good. Okay. And no one on staff has the ability to prescribe drugs, I assume?
No, no.
So what do you do in a situation where you feel that somebody needs that kind of attention?
It depends on the need. If it's a child who's not making progress because of disorder like depression or anxiety, we work with the family to use a psychiatrist in their network typically. The problem is that there's not many psychiatrists who take insurance. And so often, it's extremely costly for families and a financial burden, and it's something we cannot offer.
Yes.
It depends, if a child is felt to be at risk, we send them to be screened in the emergency room. And sometimes they can be placed on medication or referred to a higher level of care. They can be admitted to the hospital or referred to other levels of care, like I said. But it's very difficult in these times, because like we had a, we had a family, we wanted to get a child who'd just been released from the hospital into what we call a step-down program, which is more intensive than traditional outpatient. And there's a wait. And so these kinds of things really kind of hamper the work.
Comment, general comment, quality of care. Yeah. Thank you.
I hope I answered your question.
Rob?
Just, so I have, so for data's sake, approximately what do you think it would cost for office cleaning per year? Did we ever look into it?
Carmella, I guess you have?
I'd like to kind of answer that. Right now, David and I are looking, because the Health Department was not kept up to our standards, David has been looking at what, you know, the cost of identifying exactly what we want done in the Health Department and in the senior centers. So I think, David, what we could do is just add, you know, get a list from Bridget, like what they would like to have cleaned, and just put it into, you know, that, yeah. You know, and then that person would just come and do the whole civic, the whole civic center, you know, because we're doing it anyway. So we might as well just kind of include you at this point. All right? So just put down your wish list, what you want done, and give it to David.
Thank you, Carmella. I think it's a valuable resource for the community, and we should try to make it as a pleasant experience as possible.
Well, that's how, that's how I felt about the Health Department, too.
See, I think that's a more cost-effective way of providing services. If I remember correctly, we paid thousands of dollars to hire outside contractor to come in and clean. And that just, that's why it was decided a year ago that really can't afford it, because it was just too expensive. So this will work out real good. So, thank you, David.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from council? All right, I will now open it to the public for questions on the, these departments. And if you have multiple questions, what I'll ask you to do is ask all your questions at once, and our professionals will keep track of them and then step up and answer. And again, we will try to, you know, keep your questions to three minutes. We won't necessarily keep our answers to that. So with those guidelines, anyone have any questions on the Police Department and all the departments underneath that? So, okay, seeing none, we will move on to the Fire Department. Chief? And Chief, and Bridget, thank you.
Good evening. Okay. Before we go into the numbers, real quick, I'm just going to give a quick, brief overview of what my department is and how we function and what we do. Because like that old TV commercial about Martin's Home Decorating Center, we ain't just paint. Fire Department does a lot of stuff for the citizens of Madison. We provide the fire suppression, rescue, and salvage operations for fire scenes and emergencies. Recently, we started doing EMT services for the citizens of Madison in conjunction with and under the direction of the Madison ambulance squad, particularly during the daytime hours when their staffing issues seemed to be impacted more. We were helping them out, and it's working well. We were helping them out, and it's working well. It's now the norm to see a fire truck show up at a medical emergency, especially during the daytime hours. And then evenings and weekends, when the ambulance squad is already out at their primary call, Fire Department is showing up to provide medical service while the second ambulance is being mustered or mutual aid ambulance is being requested. So, to the citizens of Madison, if they're, I don't think they're noticing a deficiency. I think they're noticing an improvement in the medical service that we both provide jointly. And that started in 2010. We do motor vehicle extrications, hazardous material response, confined space rescue, which we specifically do it for our Sewer Department, our Water Department, and our Electric Department. They can't function in their job unless we're there to be their designated rescue company or rescue service. To that end, we also contract out with three other agencies in the area as their designated confined space rescue squads, too, as a source of revenue for Madison and for us. We bring in approximately $9,000 with that. We do it for the Joint Sewer in Chatham, Chatham Township Sewer Department, and for Colgate-Palmolive up in Morse Township where they're designated rescue squad. So, it's a little bit of money that comes in. It helps offset our training costs throughout the year, but it's a valuable service that, again, our Sewer Department, Electric Department, and Water Department just couldn't function because a lot of their work consists underground. We do trench rescue, rope rescue, respond to natural gas leaks. We go to Morse Town Airport on their larger events. We do responses for carbon monoxide calls, elevator emergencies, and also mutual aid calls to other towns that need us. On our secondary services, we provide smoke and carbon monoxide detectors to all our senior citizens free of charge, and we also, at their request, go out and replace their batteries free of charge as well. We get grants throughout the year. Division of Fire Safety offers smoke detector carbon monoxide giveaway, so we take advantage of that. The Rotary Club gave us a grant last year for battery and smoke detector replacement. So, and that's done by the on-duty career staff, and so if you're a senior citizen in town, please take advantage of it. We're happy to assist you in that. We provide pump outs, take trees, down trees and limbs, lift assists, roof leaks, pet and animal rescues and recoveries, and we assist with residential lockouts. It's amazing how many people lock themselves out of their houses. From a maintenance perspective, Fire Department does a lot of maintenance for our facilities and some of the other facilities in town, too. We're responsible for maintaining four of the generators in town, and one at our building, one in this building, the one at the Midwood Water Tank, and the one at the Kings Road Cell Site. And the Kings Road Cell Site and the Midwood Tanks are primarily for radio communications. But we run them once a week. We are the liaisons between the vendors and all for their service and all like that, too, for those four facilities as well. We do our own in-house hose testing for our smaller hoses. We maintain the hydrant flags that you see on all the fire hydrants. We coordinate all the Borough fire extinguisher annual maintenance on that, and it doesn't sound like a lot, but the Borough's got a couple hundred fire extinguishers sprinkled out, all their buildings and all their trucks. And Captain Ed and a couple guys in fire prevention will take a couple days, and they'll coordinate it all with those respective departments and gather them all, work with the vendor to save money on the vendor having to go to each one and downtime with the facilities that have them. So, we take care and coordinate all that. Our small engine repairs at the firehouse, we do that. We take care of all the maintenance in our building, our facility over there with regards to cleaning the toilets in the Fire Department side. We shovel the snow, we plow the snow, we make sure that nobody slips and falls on that sidewalk for the commuters. And we basically coordinate with the heating and air conditioning and plumbing systems within that building, too, to make sure they stay alive and work well. And from an educational perspective, we do in-house Fire Department tours, we conduct fire safety programs for childrens, for parents, for the schools and at the schools during Fire Prevention Week, for daycare centers, for teachers, home caregivers, realtors. Last year, I think Captain Ed did something with a group because we started having issues with resales and what's required, what's not. And it's not a Madison law, it's a state law. So, we put this little program together, kind of took the lead on it, and we've gotten some real good feedback in our, we're not getting as many re-inspections and problems and issues when we're selling, doing the resale, so that seemed to pay off in good dividends. And we also do an orientation with the Drew students as well, with the freshman class, to kind of give them an idea of what we expect of them as students on our campus as well. So, who is the Madison Fire Department? In the world of fire departments, we're considered a combination department. We have a career staff and a volunteer staff. I have 46 personnel total right now under my control, 13 of which are in the career end of it, and 33 are on the volunteer side of things. Since I've taken office, or not office, but since I promoted to chief in 2010, we've taken on 13 new volunteers as well. So, that number's growing, and we can never have too many volunteers, firefighters, to do what we do. Of that group of 33 volunteer firefighters, just so you're not misled, 11 of them are only part of what we call our suppression group, which are actually structural firefighter capable, firefighting capable. 10 are in a support group, which means they can't wear, cannot wear an SCBA, so they can work in a supporting role, do everything but anything that's in a smoke environment or an IDLH environment. And I have 12 life members, which is that group of guys that I'm getting closer to that are just like to call that place home and come down for meetings and tell everybody how great it used to be and all that, tell the story. So, that consists of my 33 personnel in the volunteer division. Our strength is in our ability to provide a quick response of equipment and manpower. Our fire apparatus leaves a station with minimal staffing on it, volunteers meet us at the scene. When we can get that equipment and that manpower there almost simultaneously, it helps and it makes that outcome of that fire, that incident, go a lot smoother and a lot quicker and a lot easier. We can do that with our combination department. But each division has to be adequately and properly staffed. I can't have a strong volunteer division and a weak career division and vice versa. They both have to be adequately staffed for that to function and work. It's kind of like a piano. You've got white keys and black keys. Try and play in a song with just the white keys or just the black keys, it just doesn't come out very nice. Well, if I've got a strong career division and a strong volunteer division, I can make beautiful music at the scene of an incident.
Wow.
I came up with that coming up the parkway to San Antonio.
Good job. I thought that was supposed to be my job, but...
And again, although we are a service-oriented business, we do take in revenue for some of our services. So, in 2012, we brought in approximately $70,000 in revenue into the Borough's coffers. And that was in the form of registration, inspection fees, smoke detector CO resale fees, and again, our confined space fees as well. So, we do bring in some money periodically. My total operating budget minus salaries is, for this year, proposes $82,500. And that's about where the Fire Department was in 1997, 16 years ago, when we went back and looked. So, we are running lean and mean. We're basically a maintenance budget. I've got a few items on the list to purchase, replacement of some smaller equipment, but Ray knows if something big happens, I'm calling him up to find the money. Because if I have to pilfer my budget, then I'm going to be asking him for money for paperclips down the road. So, we're lean and mean. To be lean and mean, though, I have to get cooperation from my department, and I do that, and I get that from my, especially my career division, in the way we work together, the way we interact, their suggestions that they bring to the table, what they've learned in their world and what they bring back, their willingness to work with the Borough in a whole multitude of ways, from negotiations to the way we handle out our overtime and other workings within the department. So, the successes of keeping that budget lean and mean is not the work with the career division and the members of the department that work with us. An example of that was when we started off with our EMT training. The decision was made by them and jointly with us that, you know, they would go on their own time, we would give them the time off if it conflicted with their schedule, and the Borough would just pay for the course of the class and to backfill if the coverage was needed. So, three days a week and running all their hours, it was tough, but they all got through it, and they're all EMT certified, and every new firefighter coming onboard will be expected to do that as well. So, it works. So, with that, just to, real quick, on my budget, we are chasing grants. We do that on a regular basis right now. Last year, we got a small grant from Fireman's Fund for approximately $5,000 for some SCBA brackets for our apparatus. We are chasing a grant this year under the AFG Fireman's Grant on the federal level to replace all our outdated air packs for approximately $125,000. That was submitted last November. We haven't been told no yet, so no news is good news from what I've been told. So, we're still in the running, so we're hoping for that one to come through for us. On my budget for this year, it's pretty well flat, equal to last year. When Ray gave out the, his budget booklet for 2013, we had to, we were told we had to cut X amount and percentage out of it, so I ended up cutting my stipends out. And in conversations with Ray and Mr. Burnett, they convinced me to put that back in because it is a good thing for the volunteers. It's about, from the monetary perspective, it's about what we do for them other than a life insurance policy. So, if you make a lot of calls, you may get as much as $500. On average, you get about $75 to $100 per active volunteer that shows up. So, if it pays for a tank, couple tanks of gas, so be it. It was nice, and I appreciate you putting that back in there for us. Other than that, there's been, there's no changes, no ups or downs. We're kind of, kind of flat, both in my maintenance and vehicle maintenance budget. So, if you have any questions, I can answer them, too. Real quick, Jeanne, before I forget, because I wrote my note down about the phone system. Exactly what Ray said. We've gone, switched a couple vendors in an effort to save money, and we have saved money. Ironically, I got a phone call last night from the one final vendor that's helping us to get away from the copper lines up at the Madison Avenue Water Tank. Hopefully, that'll be done in the next month. That was part of a capital project from last year. We were just waiting for certain things to, you know, unfold. But that being said, that project, which cost, I think it was $53,000, last year's capital, but we have basically eliminated all our lease lines relating to radio communications that tie all our voters and repeaters together. So, for us, when I say us, I mean fire, police, ambulance, and public works, all our radio communications. And that's taking advantage of the RhoNet fiber that was put in many, many years ago. To that end, the phone system, that uses the RhoNet fiber 150%, has been since, I think, 2001. All our interconnectability between buildings, technology-wise, for not only phone but also for data, goes over that RhoNet backbone, and it saves us, has saved us hundreds of thousands of dollars over the years, and we just live off of it. There's no maintenance fees or service fees, so it's a good thing. So, I hope that answers your question about where we're going with that.
Does the budget reflect the cost reduction?
Well...
Because I see the increase in all the telephone line items.
An increase in what?
In the telephone line items for all the departments.
Other than, other than associated with increases in operations or other technologies that we're taking advantage of, but I've been canceling the lease line agreements. I think we anticipated saving around $12,000 to $13,000 a year once we got off the lease lines 100% in our, in our cost estimates when we were, when we were doing it for what we were paying Verizon for lease lines. How that gets reflected on the backside, I don't know. I know we take, we utilize other technologies, you know, we drop the copper, but, you know, like, when the Police Department was talking about in the patrol cars, they have to connect wirelessly and all those connections, there's a monthly fee associated with that. So, maybe we shifted from one and just moved it over to another. I know we're looking to do something like that in the fire trucks as well in the coming years. We have a lot of information, but it's kept in the firehouse, and it's not accessible there. So, if we can get computers in the fire trucks down the road and get that information brought to us that way, it works out for us, too, so.
So, questions and comments? Liaison first, if you have any?
No, I thought that was a great presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ben?
Yeah, I have a quick one. On the salary and wages line, the actual and the appropriations since 2010 have been declining, yet I see for this year's budget, you're proposing a fairly significant increase. I was wondering if you could explain the logic of that.
Well, in 2010, that's when Chief Atchison retired, and then we, I think we had two subsequent retirements after that. So, the top scale or page scale guys went down. When I moved up to chief, we didn't backfill my old position, so that salary isn't even reflected in that anymore. So, that's why those numbers stayed flat for one reason. The other reason was the FMBA agreed to 0%...
Yes.
You know, wage freezes for those two or three years. So, that's why the numbers stayed flat.
Okay.
So, this year, there's a little bump, so that's where that's coming from.
Thank you.
Any other? Jeanne?
Lou, I know that you mentioned that your department's budget will be flat for this year. So, I guess the question, probably Robert can answer better. If you look at page three of account 265, the budget for 2013 is $1,480,000. And if you look at last year's actual, it's $1,264,000. That's a 17% increase from last year's actual. Question number one. And question number two, if you turn the page to page four, the original budget for 2012 for salary does not match the numbers on page one. So, there, I think there's something needs to be verified because the numbers are inconsistent in all these sheets. Page one, if you look at the total budgeted salary for the department for 2012, it's $1,264,000. But if you turn to page four, the number is $1,375,000. So, the numbers stayed on...
Well, the, um...
Yep.
So, it's one, for recommended budgets, $1,420 on page four, and then you have to...
Which is the same on page one.
Reconcile that to salaries, overtime, and...
So, if you...
So, we add those.
They match. That number is correct, that match. But for 2012, the budgeted and the actual, both of those numbers, if you turn to page four, the budgeted for 12, it's $1,375,000. And if you turn back to page one, the budgeted amount, it's $1,264,000.
Come on up. Let's go.
Thank you, Robert. I'm glad you do.
Well, it's here.
This might be on the test.
It's your control total line. If you look at the line that says total control, that's it.
A part of Ednan's salary is charged to the construction code budget. You'll be able to see that as the fire inspector.
In years past, I was broken out of...
Yes.
...so it was all consolidated, took it back.
I'll have to make an adjustment in the fire budget to remove a portion of the salary for the, for the fire inspector that's related to the construction code.
Okay.
Now, I'm confused. The control total on the first page, which includes salaries and wages, overtime, holiday pay and standby pay, aggregates to the same numbers that we see on page four. So, what I was assuming is that page four is telling me the total compensation, regardless of source, for each member of the Fire Department, as opposed to the salary and wages line on the first page, which is only a portion, albeit a large portion, of the total compensation, right? So, that's how it boxes.
It looks like that's the case with Lou's, you know, because he's at 80% here, right, Lou?
I'm sorry.
And then you have another 20% that's in...
Yeah. Yeah, the part that's broken out in the Building Department is part of the Fire Subcode officials, which is my old title. officials, which is my old title. So, it's carried over. That's why you only see, for my salary, 80%.
80%, right.
Being budgeted out of my budget, the other 20% came out of, just to clarify that. It's not the Captain Ed's salary, it's part of mine.
So, the, I think the bottom line is that the salaries in both 2012 and 2013 are all in there. It's just how it got split out a little bit differently, so you just have to clean that up.
We work out of the building department sometimes, so they just carve that out of it for the, for the fees collected and everything else.
So, what you're saying is that Captain Nunn's has to be carved out?
Just have to, I think it looks like a little cleaning up, so it's apples to apples.
Yeah, we get it.
Jeanie, you have some more?
So, Robert, I guess, again, this, Robert, can you clarify this for me? So, for account 265, that's for the fire department. If you turn to page three, that should be the grand total for the fire department, correct? Okay, so, if-
Robert, if you can come up to the podium, please.
So, Robert, if the budget is flat, then-
Jeanie, sometime tomorrow, if you have the large budget document, eight and a half by 14, the state requires us to budget separately for the fire code official, and that number is, was reduced, was taken out of the 2012 budget that you, that you're presently looking at. We'd have to, we have to add the two together.
For 13?
For 13, and to make it comparable with 2012, we would have to add Ed Nunn's salary to the numbers that is reflected in the budget book.
Only for 13, right? 12?
And 12 as well.
Are you saying 12, you didn't do it that way? That's why we see the difference?
Well, the state requires us to, to remove the fire code official from the fire budget and put it in its own separate budget.
So, we just, but bottom line, the numbers are in there, we need to clean, clean it up so we can take the fuzz off our heads.
Yes.
And we'll be good shape.
If you do that, that will be really helpful, because looking at the two columns here on page three, there's a big difference between the two columns.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments from the council? Then we'll open it up to the audience. Again, this is just on fire department, and if you have multiple questions, ask all the questions at once, and we'll keep track of them so we can answer them. With those rules, anyone in the audience have questions on the fire department budget? Seeing done, we will now move on to public works. Thank you very much, Chief, and David.
No problem, but as far as the building budget over there, that's, that's okay too.
So, I'm sorry, not to skip over quickly, but we're flat, we're actually, we're coming down a little bit with that, and are there any questions on your couple with the reductions that are in there?
We're not washing the windows, and we're not going to do the floors as often, so that was where we eliminated.
We're still doing the bathrooms, though. Still doing. All right. Thank you first.
I, the budget that I have here in front of me here, I went over Mr. Cody and that. What I asked for on my budget proposals, and I did have to do a couple increases due to inflation and that, because I work with supply and demand. I have to supply a service to the residents of Madison, and that's why. And what they gave me is a budget I can work with for 300 account for this year, for this whole, for the whole budget here. And if there's any questions, feel free to ask.
Maybe we'll, I think we'll go, go through each of these and then cover it. So, basically, 300 account, for all intents and purposes, with a 40,000 differences, flat.
There was, yes.
All right. And Shade Tree, 303?
Yep. It's the same with that budget, too. The board recognized all this cuts and that, and what they have here, they are, they're happy with this here. And then whatever increase, any stuff that they have to do, they're going to work within their budget to shuffle money around for any kind of programs or that they're having going on, for like Arbor Pro, or a, they have a program, a plan, they have a forestry plan they have to get done by the end of the year.
And just because I anticipate this question when we get to it, is Hurricane Sandy aftermath, we are just business as usual, not being able to catch up with that through this budget?
No.
Okay.
No. Hurricane Sandy budget, every one of the bills that we had there, I gave it to Mr. Cody and Robert, they took care of that there because their budget was depleted by that time for last year.
So, it's either fee of reimbursement or-
We're working on that.
Or it'll be years to catch up. All right.
Can I just ask David?
Well, because I was trying to get through them all, and I was just, I knew that-
Oh, you want to get through all of them?
Yeah, and then the, because I think most of them, yeah. So, giving, Building and Ground, 310?
310 is for Hartley Dodge. This is the Hartley Dodge budget for the maintenance of this building here, and by everything here is flat from last year, we didn't do any increases here.
So, and we had an increase from 2011 to 2012, which reflected coming out of contracts, warranties, I believe, and we're flat.
Yes.
All right. 315, which is vehicle maintenance?
Vehicle maintenance.
Bless you.
God bless you.
This one here, we had to increase a little bit on, on our vehicle maintenance due to cost of parts for vehicles, and then some equipment that we have to purchase for the maintenance of the vehicles.
And so, we are, yeah, just a slight-
Yeah.
17,000.
Yes.
Sewer line maintenance, 457.
Sewer line maintenance, this budget here was increased very little, and otherwise, we're staying almost as what we were last year.
12,000 increase, and that's coming, that-
Yeah.
Just a little bit here and there?
Just a little bit here and there. And that has to do with a lot of state regulations that we have to keep by with stormwater regulations and taking care of the stations.
And then garbage and, I'm sorry.
That has to do with, with the bioxide stuff that we buy too for North Street and Candlewood, and the rental, for the chemical. I pay for the chemical for the, for putting into the lines, and Bob takes care of the maintenance, the rental of the equipment.
And then 465, which is garbage and trash removal, we see a very slight increase also, about 50,000.
Yes. That's due to the, to what the budget, for what the contract is for removal of the, of the trash, of the garbage, and then the tipping fees has gone down for February 1st.
All right, so we're reflective, we lower tipping fees and increase contract.
Yes.
All right, start with Liaison, if you have any comments or questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Your budget reflects a flat head count year over year?
Head count?
Yes.
No, head count, I'm down. Head count, I'm down. I did, I have to, I have a, well, I'm down, down another man, that I am down right now. And then also too, last couple of years, we have eliminated a man from every department, and it's made my work very hard to get done. When I cut, got to go from a four-man crew to a three-man crew, that's, it's a lot of things, a lot of state regulations and that, I have to shuffle guys around, or I have to prolong, put jobs off to do when I get the full crew back. That's what I have to do. Thank you.
So, ideally, you would, if I read between the lines, you're making, make and do, but-
Making do the best I can, but I would like, well, that's something that we're going to be discussing, in regards to manpower and head count.
Other questions? Carmella and then Jeanie?
Can we go back to Shade Tree? I just need this for my own information, actually. You have, like, other maintenance services, it's 303, 214, and it's 84,750. Is that trees, or what is that for?
303, 214, that is maintenance of, maintenance and removal of trees. That's broken down to two different departments, two different parts of the budget. There's a breakdown for tree trimming, which honored, is contracted, is under bid to do, and then tree removal is under Tree King, which does is under Count, Marsh County Co-op, for removal of all the trees.
So, going down to agricultural supplies, the 13, 5, is that the trees that they intend to buy, or?
Yes. That is the money to purchase the trees, we're purchasing 105 trees this, for this upcoming year.
This is 105 trees this year?
Yes.
The other question I had is, like, in your vehicle maintenance, you know, and that, that kind of is a question, I guess, for everybody, basically. Do these figures include, like, warranties on, on all of your vehicles that you have, or don't we have warranties on them?
No, not the warranties. That comes when we get the vehicles and that there. And then we, but well, before we do any work to any new vehicle, we check to see if there's any warranties or recalls to send them back to the, to the dealer to have it done.
Right.
That's what we do.
But is it included in here? I mean, as a cost?
No. Usually, when we purchase a vehicle, we get a warranty with that vehicle for X amount of years. That's what we get with, that's part of the package or whenever we buy the vehicle.
And we would not, after we buy the vehicle, we would not buy an extended warranty.
No, we don't.
That's my next question, they're so small.
You know, that's why they pay me the big bucks here.
Okay, thank you, David.
Austria?
Oh, thank you. Thanks, David. I know you're down, but haven't we supplemented your staff with outside contractors? I mean-
I, whenever I have a big emergency in that, we do, I call in for contractors. That's the only time. But for regular maintenance work and regular work in that, no.
Not, I thought we were, they were, we were outsourcing the lawn cutting at the different areas, no?
No. None of that at all. That's all in-house.
Only on emergencies.
Only on emergencies.
Rob?
Thank you, Mayor. So, David, in addition to replacing the one head count you're down, do you have a preference for how much, how many additional head count you would like, and how, in your opinion, how would that affect the amount of money we pay for overtime, both regular overtime and snow removal overtime, if we were to fulfill your request?
Well, to answer your first part of that question, for the, well, for head count, I would like to have, what I discussed, to have one more man put back in the sewer department, road department, and parks department.
And that's in addition to replacing the truck driver number two?
In addition to replacing the truck driver. Because if I put a man back, I'll take it for the sewer department alone. When I have, it's a four-man crew, to do sewer cleaning alone, I have to have three men at all times on that truck. When if I, and now I only have two, three, if one is not there, I, two, I can't send them out in the road. Because I can't be pulling guys from the road department, which is only three men to go with them. For one, they're not trained to work with, working from fine space, when they have to do in the sewer department. Two, the parks is so, got so much work going on, I can't be taking anybody out there. Was an eight-man crew there, I'm down to a seven-man crew right now. So, that's where I have, that's where I can't be pulling gentlemen from there to go into the sewer department. That means that project will be prolonged even longer for sewer cleaning for that department. And the same thing like with the, now when we go to the road department, OSHA requires me to have at least six men on the road doing patchwork. We've been doing it with four or five, but we're doing it just to get it done, so this is where we get the work done. And that's why I need another man there, and then when one guy goes on vacation or calls in sick from a three-man crew, I'm down to two men, and I can't do no patchwork at all. That's all I can do is fill in puddles. And any other work I have lined up with them, I got to have them do that. So, and then now to the parks department with adding another guy there, due to all the addition of Bailey Ellard, MRC onto my workload, because MRC is a lot of work up there, because it's run a very long time. There is, we do have a contractor that comes in and does maintenance to that, to the turf. I have him come in twice a year to hold up our warranty, but then there's other stuff that we have to do in between on grooming it and cleaning it, that we have to do, and maintaining of the concession stand there, and then all of the, all of the other concession stands too, and Bailey Ellard too. It's a, we have a very active recreation in Madison. It's really exploded in the last, say, five years. And that's why, that's why with, and then when we start lining fields and that, where I have to put actually two men lining soccer fields and, just soccer fields for two days, one every week. That's what happens there. And then if you take two men for baseball, that's got to be on, two men for taking care of the mother things, taking care of that there, and then trying to cut three, almost 300 acres of grass, I'm down the, a lot, and then I have to put one man on garbage every day, and cleaning bathrooms. That's what the, one guy, if you go see him riding around with green barrels and trucks, he's doing all the playgrounds and Dodge Field, because there's, we have a lot of people that go in Dodge Field every day. And all the play, and all the playgrounds, baseball fields, all over town, and other parks too, where there's garbage cans that have to be cleaned. That's where, with overtime and that, it will cut me, cut guys' overtime down because they won't be out there as long. They'll be done quicker and then back home. That will cut it down. And then I'll be able to rotate guys around some too. That's, that's what I can do, what if I have the manpower. But there's where my biggest problem is. So, I have to learn, my motto is, try to do more with less, and I'm doing the best I can. And sometimes it gets very tough. So, there's where sometimes I have to pick the most, prioritize the jobs. Which one do we have to do first? That's what I, that's what I have to do.
Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
Jeanie?
David, when you say three different individuals, or these three are actually one person?
Three different individuals, one for each department.
Three additional.
Yes.
Okay, three additional.
Yes.
Okay, David, for public works, account 300, you have mentioned that your budget is flat for this year?
No, it came up a little bit.
A little bit, like 2%? Okay.
Nothing's flat, it always goes up a little bit.
Right. But this 2% is actually 26% over last year's actual. So, if you look at, if you look at last year's actual, as compared to this year's budget, it's 348,000 dollars over last year's actual. That's on page 55. So, if we go back to-
Actually, Jim's got-
Part of it is $90,000 less than snow removal overtime, because last year, it didn't really snow.
We didn't?
And part of it was David's salary, the staff line was down by $100,000. So, of the difference between the appropriation and actual last year, which is $220,000 on the staff side, which is all of the decrease-
Jim, could you slow down and let us know what page you were looking at?
Okay, so, it's page 52, which is probably, which is probably the first page of 300.
Yep.
So, the first page of 300, the third line down, you'll see, you'll see snow removal overtime. So, in 2011, we had a lot of snow, so it was $122,000. But in 2012, there wasn't very much snow at all, so it was only $21,000.
Right.
So, that $90,000 falls to the bottom line, which is why the actual is lower. And that is a combination of weather, but also when the actual's lower than the budget, it just shows that a department head's doing the best they can to save money, which isn't a bad thing. It doesn't mean that the budget should always necessarily be adjusted. Salt and brine, I'm sure would be another line, I didn't get to it yet, but I'm sure if I do, where is it, Ray? Snow removal-
It's on page 55.
Yeah, I think it was 50,000, I think I saw 50,000 there.
I think there's a big, big drop there, right? Yeah, so we had a 60, $50,000 difference in what was appropriated versus what was actually used there. So, so there's a, those are two kind of good examples, Jeanie, as to why you're seeing that big variance.
Right. Now, here's the, my next question is, all these items that we just talked about, snow removal overtime, do we really need to increase that number from last year? That's, and the same goes for vehicle rental, page 53, same goes to saw, sand, and brine. If we did not spend that much, I think the highest that we see in the past three years, it's 90. Now, do we need to go over 90 and make it 110? Those are the questions.
I would say yes. We need to be prepared, because a calendar year budget covers two winter cycles. So, it's beginning of the year, so we get the January, February, March scenario, then on the back end of the year, we get the November, December scenario. The other part of it, we close out payroll normally out about the 10th or so of December. So, I'm sure that we've already got charges against this year's budget because of the snows that came after December 10th, when that payroll applies and gets carried over into January of 2013. I don't know what Robert wants to join. The other part is, we weren't fully engaged in the brining, if you notice, where VPW's done an excellent job. I don't know what Robert wants to join. The other part is we weren't fully engaged in the brining, if you notice, where VPW's done an excellent job riding around town. You see that we're out two to three days ahead brining every road in town, so we're using a significant amount of brine. The other part of this is we bill the housing authority and the schools, so we're using more brine. That revenue doesn't flow back to their operating budget, goes back into the general coffers. So they're, they're buying in quantity because they're buying also for other of our partners, like in particular the school system, who's using a lot of the brine. So yes, we need to be prepared, and you can never have enough money in these line items. Because we don't know when we're gonna get bombed with a storm.
And plus, snow removal overtime?
Snow removal overtime provides for not just that, it's also, we have trucking for outside, which is one of the things we were doing. When we need, if we get a catastrophic event and we need to truck snow out of downtown, we supplement our crews with extra people and extra private vendors to come in and assist us. So.
Jeannie, I just wanted to add, the, the actual numbers that you see for two thousand and twelve are not reflective of all the enormous overtime that was spent on the hurricane. They're charged, they were charged against electric facility, okay?
I know that.
And I authored the, I recommended the one hundred and forty thousand dollar snow removal number, just because of the events that we, we have been seeing. A hundred and forty thousand dollars can go in two storms.
Okay.
It, it is one of those tough, tough to call. Uh, Jeannie still has some, and as soon as Jeannie's done, then we'll go to Carmella.
Just going down, count by account. Um, three oh three for shade tree. I'm surprised that we don't budget even more than the thirteen thousand for replacement of trees. Um, is there any reason why we budget just for one oh five and not anymore, since we lost so many trees?
Uh, well, every year, we only, they only plant a hundred and five trees. That's what we always did. And now this year, they just received a ten thousand dollar grant to plant more trees too, from the Friends of the Shade Tree too, which they're gonna be adding more trees to that list too. Just, I forget which meeting that they presented, the Friends of the Shade Tree sent it, gave a check to the Shade Tree to plant additional trees this year.
Planting the additional trees, who actually does the planting?
Okay, the hundred and five trees, my road department plants those for the Shade Tree. My road department will plant the hundred and five. When it comes to the, whatever remaining trees that they have that have to be done, for what species they want and what the cost is, they have a contractor to them. The remainder, it could be seventy tree, it could be, say seventy trees, it could be eighty trees. It all depends what, what species tree they want and what it costs per tree.
So is that part of the grant, or do we need to reflect that in the budget?
I don't know if that's, that's not part of this budget here. That's actually ten thousand.
Yeah, so these friends are doing it directly, so it stands separately.
Okay.
So that's why there's gonna be more trees planted than a hundred and five this year.
Okay.
And the, and the, we just did a hundred and five trees and the, and the, the price coming in for them, this one here came at, say, eleven-five. That's what it came in for, for a hundred and five trees from Barton Nurseries. Because we sent up, we send out a quote to six different vendors for supplying the trees. And whoever sends back the best, best quote that can supply all the trees and that they're, that the Shade Tree will even go down and look at them, make sure they're quality trees that we're looking for. That's what we call. Barton Nurseries is the one that went, won the bid for this year, for the first round.
Okay. Um, just curious, how many man-hours does it take to plant one tree?
To do one tree, it takes about maybe two hours. Two, two hours a tree. Because what we do on plant a tree is we're going out there, use, it all depends where they put the X on the ground too. If they put an X right on top of an old stump, we're there banging with a backhoe, trying to get through, and then we gotta move it sometimes. Because they don't let the stumps rot out where we're gonna be there trying to plant the tree.
Okay.
So that's the whole time.
Okay, moving on to, um, three-ten buildings and grounds. Professional services for fifty thousand dollars, what does that cover?
That consists of all of our maintenance contracts for Hartley Dodge. Elevator, air conditioning, backflow preventers, all that stuff that has to get done here when we have the renovations done here. There's a lot of, a lot of things that have to get tested every year and maintained, like the elevators have to be inspected twice a year, state inspected.
Okay, do you foresee that there will be a lot more work done this year than, than last year?
No, no, but see, this year, last year, we were using part of a different account to pay for the maintenance contract. This year, there wasn't a lot put to this item here. Now, this year, you're gonna see what it's actually gonna be, because last year, before we had the budget set, before we moved back in, I couldn't use that, this line item until the budget was in place.
So is that why the, we only spent twenty-six thousand and now we're budgeting for fifty?
That's the reason there.
Okay. Okay, if you look at the bottom line on page sixty-one, I guess you explained half of that, it's because of that item. The, um, for this department, you're budgeting fifty thousand over last year's actual. I guess part of that is what we just talked about. And the other part is the actual maintenance of the building, sub account two thirteen. Can you talk a little bit about that? That's the thirty thousand dollars on page sixty. Last year, we used nineteen, and this year, we, we're budgeting thirty.
Oh, this year, maintenance of the building, let me go to one thing, and I'm gonna give a complete breakdown there, what it is for. Because I have, I have, under different subcodes, it has what I use it for. Okay, that has to do, that thirty thousand there, maintenance of building.
Jim's got it.
Yep, the old one, that's not. This here consists of all repair, general maintenance costs, painting, carpeting, electric, that's the electrical work that has to get done here. Any, well, any kind of, well, roof repair, outside plumbing services that gotta come in, any kind of locks that gotta change, air conditioning repairs that have to be done, repairs for the clock that has to, that's where all this money, that money is used for. And what we have.
Roof repair, we just, roof repair?
If there's any leaks or that, yes, if there's any, any kind of repairs, yes, we have to have somebody go up there and repair it. Yes.
The other thing, if I could interject, our generator, part of this is also, we're gonna expand the capacity of the generator to continue.
So that's included here?
That would be included in this to extend the service so that when, God forbid, we have another emergency, the courtroom will now be energized, the hallway, we could use it as a warming center, charging station. Right now, the building's probably eighty percent on the generator. This way, a hundred percent of the building will be on the generator.
So that cost will be part of this and not part of the utility?
That'll be part, yes, that'll be part of this.
Part of this, got it.
And the roof, we have a slate roof, we only replace sections of the roof. Slates blow off or they get damaged, and we have to replace the slate, otherwise we've got.
So it's an unpredictable line, yes, sir.
Okay, that explains it. Thank you for that. And the next one is for three fifteen. That. Uh, for three fifteen, vehicle maintenance. Again, this is one of those that, um, that we're budgeting fifty thousand dollars more than last year's actual. I noticed one of the items that contributed to this number is the snow removal overtime. Um, I suppose that's the same, that we want to budget more, or you have a different explanation for this? Since we all only use five thousand, we're budgeting four times as much.
If you look at the history of two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, it's pretty, it's right, it's right on, it's right on mark there, so.
All right. Are there other items that's contributing to the fifty thousand?
The only thing I added on here was this, uh, under hardware and tools, I had to add in a six thousand dollar piece of equipment that we have to purchase for the air conditioning systems for all the vehicles. When we do air conditioning, when they're doing air conditioning, checking for all, all vehicles for tomorrow. Our machine is outdated, we have to purchase a new, new piece of equipment.
Okay. And the next one is four fifty-seven. Four fifty-seven is sewer line maintenance. For this one, we're budgeting twenty-two percent more than last year's actual. So there are a couple of items that kind of jumped out, and page ninety-eight. Overtime. Uh, we're budgeting twice as much as we spent last year.
Two thousand and eleven, we spent almost twenty-two thousand dollars.
Yep.
So it's another variable that.
See, I'm, I'm hoping that because we're doing a lot of sewer maintenance work and, and hopefully we will not see more emergencies like previously. And we don't, therefore, we don't have to spend as much on overtime.
Well, it has to do with, with the, their overtime has to do with a lot of any kind of, their regular overtime, it comes with any kind of sewer, well, any kind of sewer, like a mark out's gotta come in during the night, or any kind of roof work that has to get squared away there.
So this is not just for emergencies?
No, no, so, it's, uh, their overtime consists of when they're on standby, if they get called out, when they're on standby for non-swear related, non-swear related incidents for standby. Then also too, if they have to go with the water department out of water main break, they have to, it's a joint, cross train that we have between the two departments, so we can make, have enough men out there to take care of that, take care of that water main break. That's what, that's what that's for. And then that's what is there.
So, I, I'm not sure that I understand. When there's a water main break, your sewer department will go out and that will incur over?
Work with them, yes.
Oh, to work with them, okay.
To work with them.
So we will, in case, like what you just said, if there's a water main break, we will incur overtime in both the water department and the sewer department?
Yes.
Overtime and standby?
No, just the two departments, just the sewer and the water. If there's a water main break, they only call the sewer department out. To work with them, to have a six-man crew to work on the road to get that water main break fixed.
Okay.
Because when you, if we have a water main break on any road, I'll say, any road, we have to have six men there according to OSHA regulations. We have to, we have a trailer consistently set up for water main breaks that carries all the equipment for barricades, barrels, generator, saws, uh, pipe, uh, clamps. And pipe and everything in this trailer, so when they go to it, all they bring is the truck, the backhoe, and the jackhammer, and it's done. That's what it does, that's what we have with it.
Thank you for that explanation. Can you talk about professional services?
Professional services, okay. Professional services under this here has to do with all stormwater regulation permits that have to be paid. That's what that is in there for.
And you're expecting that we will incur a lot more cost this year than previous years?
Uh. No, no, there's nothing extra coming up on there.
So we only spent six thousand last year, and we're budgeting sixteen this year?
No, there is.
Nothing.
There's transfers, right there?
I may have.
So it's, it's historically has been eight, eight to nine thousand, so the question is, is.
Seven thousand, eight thousand, and six thousand in the past three years.
So it's.
The only thing I have there was, oh, you know what's coming up on that there? What I use that for, I forgot to tell you. I have the generator air permits. I have two generator air permits that I always have to carry, one for North Street and one for Candlewood, that we're just putting online next week. It's just being done, because when you put a generator in anything over thirty-seven KW, you have to get what they call a DP air permit. I have to go through a company to get this permit for that generator there. And that costs on average between six hundred to twelve hundred dollars for that generator. Like the one at North Street is a hundred twenty-five KW. The one I just put over, we're putting in over at Candlewood is an eighty KW.
So, so that would be the, the additional fees are related to?
That's where the air permits.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, chemicals, next page at bottom of ninety-nine.
Could I interject just before we move on? Can you just, David, where are you paying? I mean, we just did emissions testing on all your vehicles. Wouldn't that come out of here?
Oh, no, that came, that came out of the, my, my professional serv, my, out of, uh, I think I took that out of, I had to make up a professional services because we don't have that three hundred count. Or the three fifteen account. That would be on the vehicle maintenance.
Vehicle, vehicle maintenance, professional services.
Where would, where would your camera, if you were gonna camera the sewer lines and take films of the sewer lines, where would that come out of?
Uh, if we wanted to.
Camera?
Film obstruction?
Oh, film the sewer lines, that would come out of, of, that would come out of for, that's National Water Main, and I set them up with, um. That one there, I'd be taking that out of there too. Out of that one there for sixteen, two fifteen, professional services. Because that, that varies, um, price-wise, when we do the, like, thank you, Ray, for that, but that's for when we TV lines there, it varies from, uh, well, they come in for, say.
Just to, we can, I think we've covered this, so between permits for the generators, potential filming and all that, that, that's why it's at sixteen despite the, the previous history. So we can move on to the next, Jeannie, your next one?
I already moved on. Chemicals?
Chemicals, that's dioxide. That is the, that is what we have that we inject into the sewer lines to try to control the smell, North Street and Candlewood. The prices, we're using a lot more during the summer, we use a lot more because of.
Did the price go up as well?
What?
Did the price go up as well?
Oh, yes, the price does go up, so.
So that's why the forty thousand, a lot more than prior years?
Oh, yes. Because during the summer, we have, right now, like during the winter, we can keep the, keep the injection down, normal there during the normal time, but then during the summer, we gotta crank it up a little because, because of the smell in that.
Okay.
And that is something we didn't have a few years ago too, so.
We did not have that until, what, I think, two years ago, three years ago, we started doing that?
But we're working to correct the problem.
Right.
Yes, we're, we're.
Yep.
Time, yes.
Yep.
Okay, last question. Under four sixty-five. The question is, how come we did not spend any money for under two thirty and two thirty-one condominium and apartment services last year?
Jim's got that.
That ends up rolling into appropriation reserves, or I'm just looking at it because I'm taking my CFO classes. And, um, they end up getting reimbursed after the fact, so we're in the process of working with Stacy on that. So later on in the year, that line item will be, um, that line item will be hit for the previous year, so. That will get hit, it's just not, you're not seeing that it's getting hit yet. So you're looking at an actual two thousand and twelve.
Which is zero.
Which is zero now, in a month, those checks will be going out. Next, Dr. Richard. Oh, next, Dr. Richard, all right, next, this, this, this letter is coming out.
And that'll get charted.
Delayed because they submit their documents to say, here's how much we did pay for plumbing, here's how much we paid for snow removal, here's how much we paid for garbage. And by state mandate, we have, state statute, we have to reimburse them. We reimburse them not at their rate, we reimburse them at our rate. So it's a very, uh, long and tedious calculation to take their bill compared to what we calculate to be an individual unit's cost for, uh, snow, uh, for, um, uh, either street snow removal or marginal garbage.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I think Carmella, did you have something, and then, then over to Bob?
Let's see if I remember.
But if, or if you want time, we can go to Bob, he can come back to you. No, you got, you.
I think I got it. Um, one of, one of the interesting things about the brine is what I noticed, is that once you put the brine down, and we're, we're getting maybe one or two inches, it, you know, it kind of clears the streets. Is that helping you with your overtime? Do you think, yeah?
Yes, it does, that's become a.
Okay, that, that's what I thought. Um, just out of curiosity, do you, you know, maybe, uh, we, we've had snow on and off. And you guys going out in the middle of the night a few times in the last couple of weeks, you know, to, uh, to salt when, when we just had brine down and whatever. Do you know what, what your temporary budget looks like? I mean, how much you paid already this year? Because it seems like every other day. No, you don't have that? It seems like every other day, it's snowing, and something needs to be done.
And then when we do put it down, if it's only like a dusting up to one inch or two inches, that, the guys aren't even called out. They're not even called out at all. There's, like, uh, last year, I think we had two, we had two, a couple storms last year, one, we only came out once, and then we had a couple more snowstorms, we didn't come out at all.
Yeah.
Because the brine that took care of it.
Yeah, so you have a balancing act with, you know, like buying more. Yeah, so you have a balancing act with, you know, like buying more of brine or, yeah. But you don't buy the brine, right? You don't buy the brine. You make it.
No, I don't. I purchase it.
You purchase it?
I don't, I didn't want to, I'm not getting it to making it yet because it's a, in the long run, between if I had purchased the maker, put the facility in and that there, it's cheaper for me to buy it right now.
Okay.
And I get to buy over brine. That's what we put down.
Yeah.
So, that's what we put down and it works very well and we use it all on everything. Sidewalks, concrete, marble. So that's where it works very well, even the sidewalks.
Okay, thank you, David.
Hey, Bob?
I'm good.
Oh, you're good. Anything else from the council? Ben?
I'd just like to follow up a bit on the, on the question asked earlier by Councilman Carter Nello. I expect that this is not a question that you're prepared to answer immediately, but it would be very helpful if we could get the information in the next couple of days. And that is, he'd asked the question, if you have three additional employees, how would that impact overtime? So that, it would be very helpful to know that.
So, so basically, we want a little exercise on the, the cost of three additional employees, netted out by savings and overtime, just to give a feeling or, okay. If, okay, yes. All right.
Just a clarification. I know, David, you made an opening statement, the budget that's proposed, there is no reduction of personnel in your department. You have one truck driver who recently resigned. That position's in the budget, fully funded. And it's a governing body decision to determine to fill that or not to fill it, or if to fill it and when. So there is no proposed reduction in DPW staffing. Two is, in terms of other departments, does any other DPW have a dedicated street sweeper that you're aware of? Does any other town have a dedicated sweeper like we have?
Yes.
Who?
Some. Some of them. There's one, I can make the list, there's a lot, a lot of other towns.
Okay, but is it possible to reallocate the sweeper when sewer's short or another department? Because...
We've already been doing that.
Okay, so we don't need to sweep five days a week?
I...
In terms of the new staff, just ballparking, taking the entry-level salary under the expired Teamster contract, it's about forty-five thousand dollars, times three individuals, and then you add a thirty-five percent load factor, it's about two hundred thousand dollars. Do you have suggestions how to fund that through your budget? Because if not, we're doubling the proposed increase in the budget. The, you know, the one hundred and, one point four eight percent raise in the tax rate generates a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars in cost. The proposal tonight for extra people exceeds that. So we would be doubling the tax increase that was being proposed. So either we're willing to do that or there's gotta be corresponding reductions in the budget and we should look to your department for those economies. If we're gonna be adding a hundred fifty thou, that's just me personally.
What was the amount, Ray, that you said, two hundred?
The entry-level salary is approximately forty-five thousand dollars for an entry-level truck driver two position.
So that's like a hundred fifty and...
Is about a thirty-five percent load factor on top of that.
Two hundred, right?
And then in terms of staff, how many staff do we have now, full-time staff?
Full-time staff in just parks or roads or everywhere?
Holding park, every water, sewer, anybody?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Right, because Harding has twenty miles of land area. We have four miles. They have six people in their DPW. Springfield has sixteen thousand people and in six miles, they have twenty-one. So why are we so out of whack with our neighbors in terms of our staffing? Because that's what I'm having difficulty.
Will Max, Max us out of whack there? Do them towns there have the...
They have fields.
When I have them twenty-two, do they have the recreation that we take care of every week?
They have fields.
The same type, same amount of area that we cut the grass?
They have five times the mileage. They have five times the mileage to maintain. Twenty, Harding's twenty point four four square miles with six people.
Six people, is that six people?
Okay, so as we do the, again, I think the key is, as we do the exercise, what is the, if we add more men, what is the, what is the return for that investment? What is the difference to our residents? Number two is just, I think what Ray was trying to clear up, you mentioned before that when a sewer man is out, that you would have to pull someone off of water and you really can't do that, but your fallback is also your sweeper. So you have some fallback. So we gotta make sure, the understanding is, it doesn't mean we're not responding. So we do have some fallback. But you've got the homework assignment, work with Robert on the costs and the net savings and what do we actually get in return? Okay. Jenny?
Yeah, just to add to that, the point that I was making earlier, since this year's proposed budget for your department is three hundred forty-eight thousand dollars over last year's actual. If you're looking for two hundred, you might looking to reducing some of the line items. That might be another way of looking at it.
Though, though, some of them were just a single-year thing, so he's gotta do it carefully, you know?
That's right, looking at it.
Okay, at this point, I will open it to the audience for questions on Public Works. And again, if you have multiple questions, I ask that you ask the questions all at the same time and we'll keep track of them and answer them. Jerry, please, when you step up, state your name, your address, and ask your questions.
Jerry, I'm just looking for a little clarification. I thought that the detailed breakout on the garbage and trash people was very interesting. I don't think I ever really realized where the one and a half million dollars that we spent each year ago. And, you know, breaking it down and seeing that three hundred and ninety thousand is the cost of the garbage guy coming in and then we pay around five hundred and twenty-five thousand to dump it over Parsippany. So my question really is basically, can somebody give me a baseline as far as what's going on on recycling? We're budgeted to spend a hundred and one thousand to pick up newspapers and a hundred and one thousand to pick up homing of trash. The one point, we used to make money on these programs. We're not making money on them. Is there any sign that this is gonna change? I mean, this is a pretty big package of one and a half million dollars for our total, you know, collection of garbage and trash. And it looks like a place that we could save money if there's...
Before I hand that to you, any other questions you have or is that your?
That's just a question.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, I just wanna get the questions out so we, and then we'll hand, that's it. All right, Jim, that's yours.
Thank you. Jerry, the revenue that comes in from the sale of the recyclable material doesn't show up in this budget expenditure line item. It shows up as municipal revenue. So when you look at the summary budget that Robert puts together, we've got the expenses or appropriations on the bottom half. The top half has municipal revenues. There's multiple municipal revenues, obviously liquor licenses and construction fees and things like that. So it just doesn't get shown in this document in that location. Those markets fluctuate and right now, our contract that we have with Recycle America, which is a waste management subsidiary, has it tied to market indexes. So those figures can rise and fall when the cost of, or when the market for paper and the market for the plastics and aluminum and other items goes up and down. So that's not, it's a very tricky number for Robert to try to peg and for us to try to peg because the market can change in six months. As a matter of fact, six months ago, we were getting five to six thousand dollars a month in our recyclable materials in cash and hand. Now we're getting very little because the paper market really went down. Paper market's now turning around and six months from now, we may be back up to that number. But it's a fluctuating number and it just doesn't show up here.
But I think what you're saying, correct me if I'm wrong, is that looking at this, you're projecting that it will cost Borough of Madison one hundred thousand dollars to pick up net, I mean, if we pick up X and we get receipts of Y, our net cost is a hundred thousand to pick up newspapers and a hundred thousand to pick up.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't explain myself. The hundred, a hundred and one thousand dollars for picking up newspapers, a hundred and one thousand for picking up coking though, that's really two hundred and two thousand, eight hundred dollars. That's the actual contract for the guys to drive around and pick up the recyclable materials and bring it down. It's the first location. So there's no cost, there's no revenue.
That's a gross expense. It's not netted out.
So theoretically, there's no revenue, but do you have any kind of feel as far as what might come to offset this two hundred? Or should we just basically for budget purposes figure X? That's what it's gonna cost us as part of our one and a half million dollars that's costing us to pick up garbage and trash?
You might, you have to look at this differently. You know, we strictly do everything on expense and as the fire chief pointed out before, he has revenues. You don't see those revenues in his, his budget. So we can give you the detail on the revenue and what was brought in last year, but it will never show up on this line.
I just, I just think since we have the press here, I just, I think it's very interesting that you've got a very good detailed breakout of what is costing the Borough of Madison as far as one and a half million dollars a year. And the press should be detailing this so the individual property owners have an idea within their tax bill of how that is being broken down as far as how it's being spent. That's all.
Thank you, I agree. Any other?
The other benefit, Jerry, is the more we recycle, the less we have to pay ninety-two dollars a ton on the tipping fee per tonnage. So that's another benefit that's not reflected here. So better recycling, less tonnage, lower tipping fee in the county.
I understand.
So, yep. Any other questions on the DPW or Public Works? All right, thank you very much, David. Before we go to engineering, I just want to check, do we need a stretch or any sort of break or we're, we're good? Ben already snuck out on, so, all right. All right, Bob, come on up. And I'm just gonna stand up a second. My legs are falling asleep, but it's lovely chairs.
Stretch.
Yep, all right, I'm ready. So we have engineering, historic preservation, planning, board, zoning, environmental commission, and construction code. And most of these are fairly straightforward, so we'll do the same thing, have you go through all of them and then...
And that's it for tonight?
Yep. Well, we got one, we got another one after you. But we're off, we fell off schedule, I think, so you can get us back on.
So good evening, everyone. I just wanted everyone to know that we had a PowerPoint budget presentation that we put on last year and it was pretty well received. It was also put on our website later after the budget hearing. And I have a similar update to our budget presentation from last year, which is a PowerPoint. I don't have the PowerPoint up here for tonight because I think we're gonna be able to come to the chase pretty quickly and I'll be able to summarize. But hopefully that, we can post that PowerPoint update for the twenty thirteen budget year up on our website. It's a, be a departmental website location and everybody can take a look at that and really compare what we did last year to what we did this year, which I think is what most people are doing these days. So. Okay, so the Land Use Services Department consists of engineering, planning, zoning, and the Building Department. We also have several committees assigned, which is the Environmental Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission. Their advisory boards to Land Use Services. They don't really factor significantly into the budget discussion. Overall, I think we had another very good year in Land Use Services as far as revenues were concerned. I think the Building Department, year after year, seems to be a standout. I'm always surprised at what our small team of people can produce in terms of getting building permits processed and covering both Madison and very much the majority of the operation over in Chadon without any real hiccups in the operation. These shared services that we have, the Building Department, obviously produce revenue for us. There are opportunities for more revenues to be produced as we take on more activities in Chadon in the shared services agreement. And I think we're all eagerly waiting for some of those things to happen. Overall, our land use applications came in at forty-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars in revenue this past year, twenty-twelve. Building permits brought in seven hundred and eight thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars. The shared services revenue from Chadon brought in seventy thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. We also do developers' fees and builders' fees for sewer connection fee, water connection fee, road opening fees, and COA. All combined, those produce seventy-two thousand dollars worth of revenue. The entire department, and again, the Building Department is the real star of that show and was again a star this past year. So kudos to Russ Brown and his, his several inspectors that he uses for subcoating inspections in both towns because they've really done a fantastic job on no additional resources. So, very proud of that group and we all rely on them. Ultimately, the Land Use Services Division as a whole is fully subsidized by permit fees and user fees. The department as a whole, again, returns a general amount of money back to operating so that it can subsidize or, or fund other borough operations. And ultimately, I think we had a pretty good year. I think we were relatively productive in capital projects as well. We retired several projects during the course of the year. Had to manage a fair amount of outside projects between the county and public service and a number of, I guess there was the MRC Field House and a number of other activities that engineers involved in project management, management-type activities, even though they weren't borough-sponsored projects. So that kept us busy for a good portion of the latter part of the year. Earlier in the year, we did quite, quite a few construction projects and finished up one little community and hoping to do several more in the coming year. We have designed a number of plans for the coming year and they have been bid. We received bids today on Rosedale Avenue, very, very successful bid as far as I could tell. We haven't had the attorney review yet, but we got the numbers in, the numbers of the load budget. We have very competent contractors in terms of the three apparent load bidders. And so I'm very enthusiastic about the results of that bid as well. So Sampson and Rosedale have both been bid, received, and Rosedale, I mean Sampson's been awarded and so that project will move forward very quickly, so will Rosedale Avenue. So we're on track to get a fair amount of work done in twenty thirteen as well. It's looking pretty good. If anybody has any, any general questions about our overall operation, I'll certainly entertain those. Otherwise, we can go right to the operating sheets and if you want to go through those, we can look at them.
Well, I think looking at them quickly, we're pretty much flat to budget, some variations to actual. Some of these departments have fluctuations, but they're driven by revenues that also are coming in. But we'll open up for the council. We'll start with liaison. Rob, if you have any comments or questions. Okay.
I just checked one, thank you, Mayor. Bob, do you periodically check other towns to make sure our permit fees and licenses are competitive with the other towns?
We do, most sure.
Okay.
Certainly, I know Fred went last year for the Land Use Services. Generally, we also, we did our, our road opening permits to phase them, we've also the age of the road, which has done in other towns. These are fairly commetred with other towns. What else? In terms of building permit fees, obviously set by the state for a lot of what we do. And again, we have to apportion a fair bit of our operations to the Building Department to make sure that the ratio that the state maintains is a, as a reasonable building department operation is maintained. So, I mean, we really need to concentrate on maintaining certain line items and certain expenses in the Building Department. Otherwise, the state likely come in and asks us to reduce these, which to me, to my mind, would be a problem. Already, there, I mean, I've computed the productivity in terms of the fees for the finished year for the small number of people that are in that Building Department and it's really, it's very competitive. If you look at the private sector and our group there in the public sector, it's, these guys are really doing a fair amount of work for, they're getting a lot of money for, and not costing a great deal of money in order to maintain. So it's a, it's a great department for the borough. And again, they make far more money than they cost.
Absolutely. No, I know that. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Jenny?
For, for historic preservation, don't know if you can answer the question. They have requested ten thousand dollars, but we only recommend three thousand. So what is it that they want to do that they are not able to do because of this seven thousand dollar cut?
I think initially, what they had wanted to do was set up design guidelines, which they had an outside hired service give us a proposal on. And I think the proposal between some website activity, is this, am I okay responding this right?
Well, as long as it's accurate, that's the question, right?
Get an eye.
They also wanted to do a continuous survey to pursue additional historic designations for certain neighborhoods. And the neighbors in those neighborhoods were not enthusiastic. I guess that would be a term of saying it. The man's not particularly. So.
That's what the, ten thousand was for, I see, okay.
I think what ultimately, what that means...
Doing the photography too? Hiring, yeah, professional photographers or something.
And there was website activities as part of the proposal. Certain things that we can do in-house. And so I think we, we break down that proposal to components, they can still make progress on one of the aspects in terms of design guidelines that they wanna make progress on. And then we can, you know, digest that and do some of the work in-house. progress on, and then we can, you know, digest that and do some of the work in-house to get it up on the website and...
What specific neighborhoods are we talking about?
We're not talking about one. They, they were talking about Maple Avenue.
They were talking about where?
Maple Avenue was on, at one time.
And now we've got a little...
Which was a, a challenge, and, but if you look at the funding, I mean, the prior year's expenditures were actually giving them three times the amount they spent for cumulatively in each of the three prior years. They spent thirteen hundred, thirteen hundred, twelve hundred. They're asked for ten. We thought we were generous by recommending three thousand dollars, which would support them on their photo inventory, but we, our advice was basically come back with the neighbors signing a, a statement that they're in favor of pursuing this, rather than to propose something that the neighbors were not supportive of, and they chose to basically just reduce the request.
And I think things related to inventory, we can certainly encourage them to go after grants, I think that certainly would be...
Yeah, thank you.
And then, Janie, you're, okay, then Rob?
The only question I have is, I know that a lot of our construction officials have been doing, spending a lot of time at Union Beach. Is that, this is all, there's no incremental cost or anything that's properly budgeted?
No, and that's one of the things that amazes me, Rob, is that, is they keep finding time for, for extra things to do. Yeah, I mean, they're, it's a really productive group, and Russ doesn't let his feet touch the ground for this town. He's constantly running.
Any other questions or comments? All right, we will open this to the audience right now, again, for questions on engineering and all the department systems underneath there. Okay, seeing?
Can this department ask any questions?
This is still just, just engineering, those departments. We'll, we'll be coming up a little bit on the, any general comments.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right, seeing done, we, thank you very much, Bob.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. We'll do a little update on where we're looking to go with, potentially go with open space.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the reason I, I wanted to do this is because at our last council meeting, I spoke a bit about some of the budget issues that we're focused on, and I continue to get questions, and I realized, of course, I didn't have numbers at that point, so I thought I would just put some numbers down to give you all an idea of what's going on here. And in particular, it's, it's open space that gets the most attention, I think largely because we realized that the reval of properties in Madison, although it does not automatically generate an increase in our, in what we normally consider taxes, would result in increase in the amount of money that you pay in open space taxes. It's a, it's a two-mill tax, and so if your home is revalued up, say, sixty percent, then that amount you would be required to pay under that particular tax would go up sixty percent. And as I mentioned before, I refer to this during the summers, the stealth tax, because you really don't see it coming. But enough people have talked about it, and I think rightly so, that it's time to explain it in a little more detail. I'm gonna be very brief here. The, the, the starting point for all this is that we have two pieces, two really major pieces that we have to fund out of open space. There are lots of remediation projects going on, both in Bailey Ellard and the MRC. Those projects are paid for by the combination of what's currently in the open space balance and what we collect over the course of 2013 with no increase in the, in the amount of money collected. In other words, the open space mill tax would go down, but the net effect would be that the, the amount collected from you would stay the same. That combination, in other words, those monies collected during the year, together with already in balance, will take care of a lot of these projects that have been mentioned with regard to both Bailey Ellard and the MRC. So the question is, what remains? Well, what remains is the original purchase price of the MRC land being thirteen million fifty thousand dollars, and, what did I just press the wrong one here? Bear with me. And the MRC fields originally cost us three-point-five million dollars. Now, those numbers have been whittled down appreciably by grants, some principal payments, some money coming out of open space. In the case of the MRC land, we've reduced it by ten million one hundred and sixty-two thousand. There's yet another piece outstanding that some of you may recall, and if our remediation is done on time, we will get it and reduce the total significantly by about another ten percent. In the case of the fields, we've generated three-hundred-and-seven thousand dollars. That's been applied to the original three-and-a-half million, and that's been a combination of open space money, money generated by the MAF, and I believe that's the principal amount of, the principal sources for that money. So where does that leave us? Well, it leaves us with two-point-eight-eight million dollars for the MRC land to be funded, and, come now, here we go, and for the fields, three-point-one-nine-three million dollars. Now, you might ask, well, how have we been doing this to date? We bought the land several years ago, and the fields have been around for now over a year, and the question is, we've been using bond anticipation notes. And bond anticipation notes, in the world of municipal finance, are what their name suggests. They are notes that are intended to fund a project pending something else happening. And the something else typically is the aggregation of a project. In other words, you may have, maybe you're doing multifamily housing, and you, and you need money for one section, and over time you're gonna have multiple sections, and eventually you'll get to the point where you want to bond the whole thing. Or you may be generating money from other sources, and you're waiting for it to come in before you settle on the amount that has to be bonded. The feeling I have, and, and I believe others on the council and, and people in, in government here share, is that this is an amazingly opportune time to take it to the next step. First of all, with regards to the land itself, we're just about at the point we expect it to be when we would go to longer-term bonding. With regards to the fields, not quite where we wanted to be, but on the other hand, when I started looking at interest rates back in December, we were staring at rates that we haven't seen since Eisenhower was president. They've gone up a bit since then, we're now talking, we're now talking about Nixon. But the point is that we're, we're really dealing in once-in-a-lifetime levels. Now, what we did here is we cushioned it a bit, because we're talking about the funding happening in the summer. It would take place in August. I can't predict interest rates. So we, we're assuming they're gonna go up a bit. Every indication in the market suggests they're not going down. They may be beginning to trend up slightly. The reason we selected twenty years for the land as the term and ten years for the fields is to more or less match the, the term of usage for those facilities. In other words, land is land. If we could, it stays in perpetuity. If we could fund it for a hundred years, we'd fund it for a hundred years, because it's still gonna be there. The fields, we know, will have to be reskinned in approximately ten years. The warranty that we've gotten reflects that, so it makes sense to have the funding of the fields be shorter, because otherwise, just going out, say, fifteen years, you'll be in a situation where you've had to reskin the fields, but yet taxpayers are paying for the initial field that no longer exists, right? So that's not a very logical way to do things, and therefore we came up with ten years. Now, the question is, what is this cost? And the magic answer appears. Okay, so this is first-year debt service. It will decline over time, slowly, but in the first year, we're talking about an aggregate of six-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars. Now, if you're not familiar with the open space collection at this point, let me tell you, it runs about four-hundred-and-nineteen thousand. So you're looking at a shortfall in excess of two-hundred thousand dollars. And anyone who's done the math in the back of an envelope is probably saying to themselves, this guy Wolkowitz told me he's aiming to try and get this to be flat, which means the rate would have to go down, but he's showing me that we can't afford to do that. And what I would suggest here, this is, gives you the shortfall. We would have a shortfall of two-hundred-and-three thousand dollars a year. Now, there are two possibilities. Possibility one is, I take back what I said, and we let the rate stay at two percent, we collect approximately six-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars a year. As a result of that, we have the ability to handle the debt servicing for both projects, and on top of it, we have some money, albeit not very much, for additional open space projects in the future. All right, so that's one option. The other option is, we gotta work like crazy and see if there are ways we can whittle down that number. And right now, I'm, I think the expression is cautiously optimistic, that we can, if not get it down to being in flat year over year in the amount collected, marginally higher. Now, one of the caveats, and there are a number of caveats, one of the caveats in that analysis is that we have to be able to privately collect approximately one-third of the field cost. We had a presentation from the MAF in January where they indicated they had that capacity. I'm wanting to sit down with the MAF as soon as possible and make sure they feel comfortable with this, because you, if we can get that down by a third, then that three-ninety-one number gets reduced by a third, and now we're talking about a hundred-and-thirty thousand of that two-hundred-and-three thousand shortfall disappearing. It's taken care of. If, on the other hand, we don't, or are unable to privately raise that third, I hate to say all bets are off, but there's no way we'd be able to keep the open space tax at a, at a rate that, that is lower than it currently is. We would have to go to something close to where it is now, which is two percent. So therein lies the answer. One-third of the fields is a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars of a two-hundred-and-three-thousand-dollar shortfall. Do I think there's areas where we can make up seventy thousand? Possibly. I think there are. I've had some indications of places we might go. We have conservative estimates here with regards to interest rates, but as I said earlier, come August, you know, if they're higher than that, again, we'd have a problem meeting with this. Now, what does this all mean? Well, we take that famous average Madison home, which has a market value of seventeen-hundred-and-eighteen, seven-hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars, has a six-car garage, palladium windows, your basic, right? Seven-hundred-thousand-dollar Madison home. And if you look at what, what happens year over year, if the school tax stays at two percent, in other words, if they increase it by two percent, which has been the pattern, and we, in casual conversation, we have reason to believe that's more or less where it'll come in, that would result in an increase in property taxes of a hundred-and-forty dollars. The municipal tax we've proposed to date, and again, I hope to be able to deliver this, is approximately one-and-a-half percent. That would result in an increase of thirty-nine dollars. The remaining piece is the municipal open space tax, and as you can see, if it's left at two-mill, it'll go from eighty-two to a hundred-and-forty-four dollars. So the three major components contributing to our taxes in order would be the school tax, the open space tax, and the municipal tax. And therefore, there's every reason to focus on the open space tax. The county I left open because there, there's, as you're probably aware, there's talk that they're gonna come in at zero. It hasn't happened yet. You know, if they do, that's fine, and you can see the aggregate change in taxes by adding up those three numbers, it's two-hundred-and-forty-one dollars. If they raise it, you have to add whatever they raise it to that total, and that tells you how property taxes would go up in the average home. And what I'm, again, trying to do is to prevent it from going up quite as much as that would indicate. I'd like to see the sixty-two look more like forty-two and save everyone twenty bucks. So, on the average home. So that's a quick presentation with numbers. I hope this is helpful. As I say, I've tried to explain it before in more general terms, and that was just because it was spur of the moment. I had a little more time to put this together. I have it available, one sheet, two sides. You get the house, and you get the calculations, and I'll leave it right here. So by all means, help yourself on the way out. And again, if you have any questions, please contact me. If you have any suggestions on the open space part of this, call me up. I'm, I'm very receptive to suggestions on that.
And so just to be clear before we open up for the council, again, this is, if, if we didn't take any action, stays at two, and...
Correct.
There is no other sources for, for paying off the improvements on, on the field? So it did not assume the fundraising, or, or a hybrid, which would be anticipation notes until fundraising is done and then bonding that?
Yeah, it would be some combination.
But, but it is, yeah, it's...
But the dependence on anticipation notes, I, you know, it's a...
Yeah.
I mean, I view us as having a fiduciary responsibility to Madison residents. To exercise that responsibility and not bond as much of this as you possibly can right now...
Right.
Would be, really, you'd be in violation of what you raised your hand to do here.
Yep. Okay, Rob?
Yes, I'm wondering, how much of the initial three-hundred-and-seven thousand for the fields were paid for in open space?
A hundred-and-sixty-seven down payment came out of open space.
Came out of open space?
Yes.
Fantastic.
You said a hundred and...
One hundred and sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven, yeah, that's the number, yeah.
That's, that's how we got to, the, the actual bond issue was three...
Right, we had to pay down twenty percent or something, right?
And then you added one sixty-seven, that comes out to that three-point-five.
So fundraising to date and user fees have gone for interest payments and some...
Yeah.
Principal payments, so that's, that's a, that's a small amount.
And just, just, I know I sent it to you, but I don't know if anyone else, but they passed the four-hundred-thousand-dollar mark earlier in the week.
Right, and it was a nice little pledge and...
Exactly.
Very good.
That's, that's the MAF you were referring to?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yep. Janie, and then Bob?
Yeah, I, I wanna ask this question to Robert before he leaves, if that's okay?
Robert before he leaves? Oh, there he is. I didn't step on up to the podium, the lectern, I forget which is.
Robert, if you remember, from our January budget meeting, there were some items that we asked for you to provide, and...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get you the reserve balances, I have that.
Yeah, just to remind you, we got some items already, I think we got a couple of things from you already. The, the reserve accounts, if we can get a ledger for that.
You're gonna receive the schedule, the reserve for appropriations, which will total about one-point-four million, and then there's several other trust and reserve accounts that I'm gonna provide you information on.
Okay, and you were gonna tell us about the budget deadlines and, and schedule?
We, we want to introduce this budget by the second meeting in March.
Correction, Robert. The budgets have to be introduced by March fifteenth. We spoke to our auditor today.
Yeah, or the, or the next meeting thereafter.
No. David Evans is gonna be here on March eleventh. The goal is to wrap this up on March second, introduce the budget on March, March eleventh, and meet the deadline. And he's prepared to come and do it, and you have a week to do it in between the second and the eleventh, and I know it can be done, and we need to get it done.
So...
And just, just one sec, they didn't realize you're, we're gonna move off of... Bob, was your question related to open space, or your comment?
Well, it's the first chart.
Okay, so, so, Robert's on our dime, he'll, he'll stay a little bit longer, so let's, let's close the discussion on open space, and then we can take the...
Yeah. But in this chart, you showed the ten years for...
You showed the ten, it's me making that noise here, that's why I had it like that.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Okay, you showed the ten years for the fields, because that's a useful life. Does that number include the cost of reskinning the fields, the three-point-five?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
No, I, I mean, just as an aside, you know, it's easy for me to say this, but the, the MAF is, is, as I've indicated when they were here, you know, I think it's doing a fine job. The fact that they crossed four-hundred thousand is great. I would, they, they showed a five-year plan that resulted in one-point-two-five million dollars being collected. That did include some fees, but two-thirds of it was, was fundraising from private individuals. I would hope that after they get to that point, they would stay in business.
Yeah.
And that parents whose children would now be having the opportunity in the near future to play in those fields would see they were clear to contributing and helping to reskin them. The reskinning will cost approximately a million dollars. Bob, is that, I think you're, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the open space? All right, Jeannie, you had some more on the, for Robert before he left?
Yeah, so for the next budget meeting scheduled for March second, so can we also add to the end that you will have any question on any of the items not listed? We can also ask those questions as well?
Yeah, and, and if there's anything that-
Outside of what we were going to discuss?
Right, and if there's anything we know in advance, you know-
Of course.
Yeah, put those in, send it, we'll, we'll add it in there.
Of course.
I mean, I noticed in previous years, we, we talked about the health department, but I didn't necessarily see it on-
Yeah, that is, so, so, let me-
Is that on the next time?
Yeah, so the March second agenda would be health department, utilities, capital budget, final adjustments, and we'll add, you know, anything else that, that comes in there.
Okay. One more question for Robert, if I may. Can you also give us the total two thousand twelve actuals? Because we have it with different accounts, but we don't really have a summary. If you can have that for us, that would be great.
For, for the revenues?
For both revenue and appropriation. So that way, we can actually compare our budget this year versus the grand total of last year's revenue and appropriation.
In what format?
So you're looking for a roll-up?
Yeah.
A roll-up year-end expense, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. That would be helpful.
And it should be, you know, basically a cleaned up one because we had, I forget what line the, or the condos and all that. Make sure things like that are, are in there so we're not comparing apples to oranges.
Budget's really a two-year process, so there could be other appropriations that end up coming out of last year's-
Yeah, so whatever, yeah, so whatever those are, make sure those are in there so we have a good comparison. Okay. Council, any other questions or comments? Yeah, so again, we're, next budget hearing, confirm is next, is a week from the Saturday, nine AM. Want some coffee and donuts, I'm sure. Board of Health, Utilities, Capital Budget, Final Adjustments. We will need to introduce the budget at the March eleventh meeting. That's our regular scheduled meeting. And so it goes to the state by March fifteenth.
Correct. I mean, basically, Liz was kind enough to share the schedule. The original statutory date for introduction was February tenth. The state extended it to March fifteenth. I know, Robert, thought there was an extension to the next council meeting thereafter. There isn't, according to our auditor. So we have to introduce by March fifteenth. The budget has to be, and then, it would then be sent to the state for review because it's a non-self-examination year. They return it back to us and we have to adopt the budget no later than April twenty-sixth. So we just, then, once it's down there, we can schedule our budget hearing. If we get the approval, we can have the hearing and the adoption that night. If they haven't approved it by then, or they approved it with comments, we could have the hearing and then have to reschedule the actual adoption vote.
So we would anticipate the second April meeting as being the final, the hearing and final touch?
Yes.
Can I, can I just make a comment? You know, I, I have a bunch of questions about open space tax. And what I've been doing is speaking to a lot of residents about it. And, and it's, it's very, it's a very strange thing, you know, when you, you ask. Because I've been asking, how do you feel about this? Because I, I know it's a big portion and, and for some people, you know, for seniors, et cetera, you know, maybe that, that, that difference between the sixty-two and forty-four might make a difference. Although I don't think most of them live in, in a house that's assessed for four oh nine, but whatever. But I, I find the comments like very, very interesting about this, and they vary. And I've been able to get some really good comments, you know, from people. So what I want to ask, if it's okay, if I could just put it in a concise form and like give it to Ben, you know, with some of the suggestions that I've heard. Because I think this is the best place that you get your, your best response. You know, we, we could ask a thousand questions, we could look at all of this. But, you know, how did, how do people really feel about open space? And it's surprising, you know, they're, they've been very happy with it. And they've been happy what, what we've done with it. So I, I think those, those things are kind of important, so if Ben is the-
No, I would like that.
I'll do that.
Thank you.
Yep, pass them.
Thanks.
And if appropriate, also pass it on to the open space committee as people comment on it.
Sure.
Because it'd be helpful. All right, we are now to that part of the agenda where we open it to the public for public comment. And this is not limited to just the things that were on the agenda, but anything. But it is still limited to three minutes. So as you step up, please state your name, your address, and write down the same on the list. And then the clock starts. Carmen?
Carmen Pico, North Street.
We cut our pen budgets, I apologize.
I guess so.
Yep.
I just would like to give a little, to the council here, a little bit of history as to how the road department and all the other departments were maintained back in the mid-seventies and early eighties. That's when the council decided to, I guess, hold the taxes down for the, for the residents. So they started cutting in the road department. Madison Road used to be one of the best roads around. Now they're, they're probably pretty close to one of the worst roads around. The work that the men used to do years ago, for example, they used to go around and fill the cracks up with tar so that in the wintertime, when the rain comes and it freezes, you don't get the expansion and contraction and that creates potholes. That was eliminated because they didn't have enough money, I guess, to buy the tar. Madison, along with other towns, some towns still do this, they tar and stone the roads. By taring and stoning the roads, it keeps a flat surface and it doesn't create potholes. Potholes is one of the biggest problems here in town. So what I, what I want to say is, I want to let this council know that when they ask for more men in the DPW, they need more men. Because back in the mid-seventies and early eighties, they had thirty-plus men working in that department. So if you keep on cutting, they're not going to be able to keep up with the things that are going out, going on. And they didn't have all these other, the, the parks department didn't have so many fields to take care of like they do now. All I'm saying is, you just can't keep on cutting and expect the town to be as good as it used to be. The council wants to generate new businesses coming to Madison. One of the, if I was a business owner, one of the things I would look at is to how the town is maintained if I want to bring my business there. So I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, try not to cut too much from, from the road department because if they don't maintain the roads, if they don't maintain the fields, they don't maintain the parks, Madison is going to turn into one of the worst towns as far as being beautiful. Madison has always been a beautiful town. I, like I say all the time, I love Madison. And I'm proud to live here and I don't want to see Madison go down. So if there's any way that the council can give the road department one or two men to help keep Madison the way that it used to be, that would be a feather in our cap. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carmen. Always well said. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. I have a motion to adjourn. Second, thank you all, and we'll see you here Monday.